Okay.
It's the number sixteen.
Okay.
It's not gonna be on the line.
Public hearing, I mean, I've been here fifty-
Um.
Planning Commission meeting earlier and a little technical difficulty here, but we're ready to go. And Madam Clerk, go ahead with the roll call.
For Councilor Mesa.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco.
Okay, uh, we'll start out, uh, number one, dispense with the reading of the minutes, approve the bills, go right to number three, and that will be Martha Children's Services Board, hundred grand.
Great. Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. Um, this is a transfer of money from zero one two to four twenty-two, and it's for, uh, future capital improvement projects. They wanna add some new caseworker cubicles, and they're gonna do a remodel of their bathrooms there.
Okay, and sanitary engineer, thirty-five K.
Bob Meyerano, sanitary engineers. This thirty-five thousand is being transferred from Fund Six Oh Nine to Fund Six Oh One, which is our new combined water fund, so we're just starting the process of moving the monies from multiple funds to the new water.
Have we seen any type of cost savings yet by the one fund compared to the others, or any, what are you anticipating in cost savings?
I don't know, given, we've had two bulk water suppliers raise costs, so I'm not sure if we're really gonna see a savings in a rising cost environment.
Okay.
Uh, it's really not a savings, it's a more of a resistance to this stuff. That, I know one of the smaller districts getting hit, like the Braceville with that Newton Falls.
Right.
The entire district getting hit.
Right.
Than just, uh, the Braceville district from the Newton Falls increase.
Yeah. It absorbs the burden over more of a, a larger base.
Yes, yes.
Which is good for the smaller ones.
Yes.
Number four, approve, uh, additional appropriations, health board.
Uh, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. Health board, it's an adjustment to a, a grant account to manage the cash balance. Common please is for reference book, and I'm, I'm moving to-
Number five.
Number five.
Whole bunch of them.
Yes, there are. Um, so, I mean, I don't have them in order, so hold on, I apologize for that. Uh... I don't have the clerk of court's one for some reason. It might have been, oh, there it is, I'm sorry. Um, office equipment to be reimbursed from the state. Board of Elections is, and remember, the transfer of appropriations is money that's already been appropriated in a fund, it's with, it's line item to line item within the fund. Um, the, uh, Board of Elections is, uh, increased need for computer equipment. The Commissioners is, uh, the BOE tax vet. Um, Board of DD is, um, to correct, uh, grant division use. They had put something in the wrong place, and they had to, uh, make that adjustment. Um, the Health Department, there's a bunch of those, um, let's see, Health Board, uh, six. Closing out, actually, all of these just, it are closing out grants, so the whole list, I won't go through them all, but all of the, all of the Health Board ones are, um, closing out grants. They're divided there between fiscal year twenty-two and fiscal year twenty-three.
Okay.
Um, Court of Appeals is increased need in, uh, uh, in the office equipment account. CFP is, um, increased due to three-year equipment maintenance contract, winter emergency clothing for kids in foster care, transportation and utility costs for agency clients, adoption cost reimbursement, years of service awards for agency staff, children's services, furniture cushions, replacement and Christmas expenses. Um, the, I think, I don't know that one, all right, the, uh, Auditor is an increase and decrease in payroll accounts due to retirements and staff relocating to different divisions. Um, the Sheriff's Office is a payback for, to OCJS, uh, twenty-twenty DLE and RO, or O grant. Um, the Cor- or, yeah, the Coroner is increased in recycling and shredding services. Um, Community Development Planning Commission-
And what is the Coroner, recycling?
Yeah. I'm assuming paperwork.
Mm-hmm.
I'm hoping.
Just checking.
Only you can-
Increase in recycling, what's going on over the Coroner's office?
Okay.
Community development.
Thank you, yes, it was my place. Uh, Planning Commission, it's, uh, pay, at the office for professional services related to the West Farmington sanitary engineers' office. Uh, for professional services related to the West Farmington sanitary sewer project. Um, and I think the rest of these are sanitary engineers, Bob.
Sanitary engineers, Bob Meyerano. Um, the first three are related to the earlier, um, money transfer. We're just starting the process to move money from Fund Six Oh Nine, Six Ten, and Six Oh Four for fifty thousand, fifty thousand, and a hundred thousand. That's just taking it from the districts to our new water fund. Um, we have a twelve hundred dollar, we had, uh, security camera maintenance software for two thousand twenty-two that we weren't aware that we had to pay, so we needed to transfer funds to cover that twelve hundred dollars. Um, last week, we approved the Yankee Lake, uh, construction project, so we had to move a hundred and seventy-eight thousand to cover our local share. Um, the sixty-five thousand dollars for Fund Six Eleven is to cover the bulk water costs for the rest of the year. Um, we have five hundred ninety-five dollars and eighty-five cents. That is for our Vianna Johnson Controls, um, burglar alarm. Then, we had fifteen thousand dollars for our Mineral Ridge, uh, Water District for lead excavating for the rest of the year. Um, we needed additional operations supplies at our Mosquito Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant lab for the remainder of the year, and that was five thousand, and we needed an additional twenty thousand in our Metro Sewer District for lead excavating, um, for twenty-three.
Okay. Thank you both. Number six, adopt the resolution proclaiming the month of November as National Adoption Month, November eighteenth as Adoption Day in Trumbull County. The theme for this year's National Adoption Month is empowering youth, finding points of connection. The Board of Trumbull County Commissioners recognizes the extensive efforts of probate Court Judge James Frederica and the Trumbull County Children's Services to find loving, permanent families for all children. In two thousand twenty-three, in Trumbull County, fourteen foster children had adoptions finalized, seventeen children are waiting finalization through the court, and thirty children are waiting for loving, permanent families.
Gonna be a resolution for this, and there should be somebody here.
Okay, watch for that. And, number seven. Do amend the journal action taken by the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners on September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, duly recorded in Journal Volume One Fifty-Seven, page twenty-six thousand regarding modification number one to Bowman Appraisal Services, Inc., appraisal service, review services, Western Reserve Greenway Bike Trail Phase Four, located in Howland and Weathersville Township, Warren and Nell City, in the cities, in the amount of six thousand one hundred and fifty for right-of-way services. Amendment is necessary to correct the fund number and allow Danny Malloy, President of Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to sign letter form agreement on behalf of the Board.
Just, just an accounting-
Yes.
Error here, as far as the fund number.
Okay. Yeah, Zach did call, said he couldn't be here, but that's what it was, okay. Number eight, approve the contract, eight fifty, twenty-four eighty, buying between Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services and Garwin, Inc., for the terms October one through September thirty, twenty-four, in the amount not to exceed five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Garwin will provide non-emergency medical transportation based on loaded mile or additional passage of unit of payment costs to provide non-emergency transportation services for eligible and approved Medicaid recipients who have no other, other means of transportation to and from care providers. So I take it this is for people that are not senior citizens, but-
Correct. Uh, John Gargano, Job and Family Services. Commissioner, this is a, uh, yearly thing that we have to do. We go out for bids of transportation for Medicaid recipients, those that are qualified, and, uh, we go out and we rate them, and I think we provided the rating pages for you, and, uh, Gar- oh, excuse me, Garwin, uh, and, uh, I'll go through eight, nine, ten, and eleven because they're all, uh, related. But Garwin, uh, received the, the first, uh, part of it, which is, uh, the five hundred and fifty thousand, as you've indicated, and that's non-emergency transportation for those individuals that need to go to, uh, medical providers, uh, dialysis to Cleveland Clinic, or just across the border here in PA, um, that's what that one is. Number nine, it's just a different, uh, fu- uh, funding source. It's Title Twenty transportation, and again, it's for those residents for non-emergency transportation, and, and they have no other means of transportation, and that is for October one, twenty twenty-three, to, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, in an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand dollars. Uh, number ten is, uh, a contract, or an agreement with All American USA Taxi, and that's for the term October one, twenty twenty-three, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount not to exceed eight hundred thousand dollars, and again, that's non-emergency transportation for, uh, Medicaid-eligible individuals, uh, who don't have any other means of transportation to go to the doctors, to go for some sort of treatment that is necessary for them. Uh, and then, number eleven, again, this is with All American USA, and it's for the same time period, October one, twenty twenty-three, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars, and again, that's just a different funding source, and again, it's for those individuals that are Medicaid recipients to go to Medicaid providers that don't have any other transportation, and we provide it to them. Uh, Garwin and All America were the two lowest, uh, bidders on this. Any other questions?
Were there any other bidders, John?
There were, but they did not, um, meet the standard and provide the information that they were supposed to provide, so, uh, it wasn't accepted.
Now, where do the pass-through funds pass through? Which, is that?
It's federal funding.
Right, but it says they're, they come from federal pass-through funds. Isn't that the same as the federal ones that go to WRTA, and then they get passed through?
No, 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 that's different.
They're Medicaid.
Medicaid.
Okay.
That was attempted long, long time ago to combine JFS funds with transportation. That was back in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, but our funds are restricted and can't be used for match and federal funding.
Gotcha.
Things of that nature. So we went all through that back in two thousand eleven, twelve, and thirteen, I think it was.
So JFS is the dedicated pass-through.
Yeah.
I know what you're, I, I get what you're thinking. JFS is the only person who can get these specific funds-
Yeah.
For these specific types of energy transportation.
Gotcha. Now, they business on like a per-ride fee, like what's the average per-ride?
Loaded mile.
Loaded mile. I don't have that with me, but I provided that to you, I think it was three dollars, it's seventy-six.
It's probably gone up since the last time I looked at it, it used to be two something, it's probably up to three something now.
It's, it's the three seventy now.
Per mile?
Per mile, yep.
Yeah, it's, it's three dollars and seventy-six.
That's a loaded mile.
It's a loaded mile, correct, which is different than just a regular mile. I know that's, I know, we're gonna, we could have a whole education session on transportation.
It's a lot different. There's many more restrictions on the use of these funds as compared to the transportation ones that-
It's like a tree, that's my specialty.
Well, like I said, way back when, they tried and attempted to combine all these funds, and it just couldn't be done because we had the state involved and the feds involved, and couldn't do it.
Lot of red tape.
Yeah.
Lot of red tape.
John, I know that, uh, before serving as Director, you served as, well, you're sort of doing both right now, the Attorney and Director at the Office, but before that, you were the Attorney. Have you, have, have these contracts been sent to the prosecutor's office, or have you renewed them?
They're, they're going to be sent, but this, the contracts have not changed over the years, except for, I'll say, the amounts of money-
Okay.
And the dates and things like that.
Nothing else has changed.
Nothing else has changed.
And you've looked them over in the past?
I've looked them over, uh, yes, I've, every year I look them over, and actually, I look at it and see if there's any adjustments that need to be made. Uh, there are no adjustments. I mean, it's just really a standard contract or agreement that's been used. It's been approved by the state because the state reviews or audits our, uh, our transportation, and they came in and, uh, they pulled these on several occasions, and they've never had an issue.
So essentially, the only ti- the only thing that's changed is the numbers?
The numbers.
Okay. I, I just don't want it to be made a big deal of.
No, the only thing that hasn't been changed is, is the numbers.
And those prior contracts, as, as you mentioned, been approved by the state?
Yes, we've had no problems with them. They've been pulled, they've been audited. Uh, there have been no issues on any of them.
Thank you.
Very good. Number twelve, received for record purposes from Family and Community Services, Inc., DVA Someplace Safe. The documents listed dated October one, twenty twenty-three, and are approved request of Family and Community Services, Inc., Someplace Safe, for the release and designation of domestic violence shelter funds, marriage license fee monies and divorce fee monies for the year twenty twenty-four, first half and second half. And notify Someplace Safe of his eligibility to receive these funds, documents and requests submitted by Lauren Webb, Director of Domestic Violence Services for Trumbull and Portage County. Okay, I guess it's something-
Ms. Taylor asked me to put that on. That's something that's on every year.
Yeah, 'cause it's through, uh, Senate Bill Forty-six.
The courts collect so many fees, and they have them sitting there, and this just allows them to be designated to Someplace Safe.
The marriage license fees, yeah.
Thirteen, authorized payment to the Treasurer, State of Ohio, Ohio Environmental Protection Agency, for the twenty twenty-three Ohio EPA annual discharge fee authorized by ORC, thirty-seven forty-five eleven L four, for the Trumbull County Stormwater Phase Two program in the amount of eight thousand eighty-six dollars, recommended by Director of Soil and Water Conservation District.
Is there anybody on the line from Soil and Water? Is there anyone on the line from Trumbull County Soil and Water?
Taylor may be able to weigh in on that as well. That's something she pays every year.
Cheryl on the line? Cheryl, are you on the line? Cheryl Taylor? I don't remember this, that's the only thing.
If you, I would say, do you want to go see anything, or?
Oh, she's gonna come in. Perfect, okay, very good.
Oh, okay, there you go.
Takes you twice as long on one leg. Sorry, Cheryl. This doesn't- So- Cheryl Taylor.
Stormwater we do every year, we, it's a discharge fee that the EPA charges Trumbull County, but we have several municipalities, and please don't make me count them right now, um, that they reimburse us. So we're, I'm actually collecting checks, so we will total that amount by the time we get to January, when I pay the bill. So it is basically reimbursed from Bizetta, Champion, Hubbard, Newton Township, Warren Township, Cortland City, Hubbard City, Newton Falls, Dial City, McDonald, Gerard, Weathersfield, Vianna, Liberty, Howland, and Brookfield.
So all of this is repaid to the county?
Yeah, yeah.
We're just administering it?
We, exactly. That's all it is. Basically a pass-through.
Good. All right, very good, thanks. I'm sorry to bring you in here.
No, that's okay, like I-
It just didn't ring a bell.
No, it, it's fine, and it's, it is every year, but it, it's just, it's at the end of the year, and I think everybody forgets about it, including myself.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll sign you, I'll sign you.
Okay.
All right, number fourteen, incur with Trumbull County Engineer and authorize the purchase of one twenty twenty-three Ford four-wheel-drive F five fifty truck from Valley Ford Trucks, the total purchase price of fifty-eight thousand eight fifteen. Valley Ford Trucks is able to offer this truck below the State of Ohio Department of Admin Services contract price of seventy-one, seven eighty-eight. Truck is also below the required bid amount of seventy-five thousand. No general monies are being requested for the Trumbull County Engineer. That pass-through smell test?
I, I believe, but I think, uh, he's on, I, we got an email from the Engineers' Office. If there's any question, he's on the line. He couldn't make it, uh-
Yeah, and I don't see any, we don't have any permits, anything, and all this, on this agenda?
No. No doubt.
Steve, you on the line, since you're hanging there, star six? Steve Gerber, star six?
I'm here, Commissioners.
So, so essentially, Steve, this is below, uh, state purchasing?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot below, um-
Yeah, I see that.
You know, so, so it, it seems like a good deal.
Yeah, absolutely. Nice job.
Thank you.
Number fifteen, authorize Trumbull County Planning Commission advertise a public notice in the newspaper of general circulation announcing the timeframe for and location of the request for price proposal package for the PY twenty-two community grant block grant, CDBG, residential public infrastructure grant program, American Rescue Plan Act, heat and shoot sanitary lateral household assistance project, and send letters to be mailed out to all Trumbull County licensed drain layers.
Anybody on the line from the Planning Commission?
I told Julie if we had any questions, we would call her.
Okay.
If she was spending up there.
All right, uh, Commissioners Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer. I'm involved in this one too, and basically, heat and shoot, uh, within the next week or two, we're gonna have substantial completion, and we are going to, uh, do the, uh, house connections, and part of that funding for the house connections is CDBG. So that, that's what this is involved, that there's a certain public notice that they need to put out before we can go ahead and put that out, the bid for that project.
Okay.
And it says there's twenty-five lateral household connections, and the bid- are due by three P M. No later than Tuesday, December nineteenth. Okay, so they get that bid information for that. Oh, okay, so they're actually putting it out to bid, okay.
Yep.
I didn't know they were that far along.
So any, uh, stuff that can, licensed drain layers can contact their Commissioners' Office for more information. Is this posted online somewhere too, Lisa?
Um, yeah, I believe it's going to be online.
Okay, and it'll be a public notice in a newspaper, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Number sixteen. Accept the donation from Howland Commons LLC in the amount of twenty-nine thousand eight ninety to be utilized exclusively for a turn lane study to be performed on Mines Road, Howland Township, as described in the technical scope proposal dated May eighth, and enter into professional services agreement with GAI Consultants to perform said study. The Trumbull County Commissioners, together with Trumbull County Engineer, would like to thank Howland Commons for the generous donation. This is a project that we started on with the Home Goods and Bass Pro and Myers, and Bass Pro having their grand opening tomorrow is gonna be in a massive amount of increased traffic in the mall area, and with the diverse of Diamond, uh, gonna restrict traffic on forty-six and eighty-two, um, they're looking at an easier way for people to come from behind the mall. Mines Road is one of the areas, they said a, a turning lane on Mines Road, turning people to the south to get them in the flow of traffic on forty-six would help, um, unclog the, the traffic clog. But to get it started, they needed to do the, uh, turning lane study, and Howland Commons, which is a car company, uh, offered to put the money up for the study, and then in return, um, we're looking at, through the TID and other, uh, grant opportunities to get the traffic lane built after we have the study. So this is all to help alleviate traffic around the mall area. And then, number seventeen, eighteen are executive sessions. Do you have any idea what this is in regards to at all? We can talk about it or not?
Yes, we do.
John Gargano, JFS, uh, Commissioners, we're now in negotiations with, uh, thirty-eight oh eight, which is the union, uh, child support, and, uh, I, uh, requested that executive session to provide the Commissioners with more information of where it stands right now.
Very good, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, anybody have anything else for the greater good of Trumbull County? Uh, one thing I will say, they do have the Bass Pro Shop ribbon cutting tomorrow, as you can tell, I'm pretty excited about that.
What, what time is that?
Six o'clock, and they have the owner of Bass Pro Shop, um, Johnny Morris, who is, Bass Pro Shop is the number one outdoor retailer in America, number six retail in all of America, and they, uh, uh, they sponsor everything from NASCAR to every aspect of pro sports, the Jim Rome Show, ESPN. Their logo is pretty much everywhere, and it's the most coveted sponsorship, if you get the Bass Pro Shop sponsorship. They have a couple, three, um, professional fishermen that'll be there tomorrow. They're kind of legendary fishermen from back in the day, Jimmy Houston being one, um, Roland Martin, another one, and Mark Zona, uh, and there may be others. And there, if people that watch like the old, um, National Network and old, old cable, like nineties cable type thing are familiar with, Jimmy Houston and Roland Martin, people of our age, like, I think, forty-five and above probably know who they are, maybe forty and above. Um, Johnny Morris, again, he will be there in person himself, and then they will have Chris Higbee be in the musical entertainment, uh, from Brookfield area, and, uh, they're gonna have all kind of giveaways, things like that tomorrow night, and then all day Thursday, they're having gift card giveaways on the hour or two, I believe. And, um, Wednesday, Thursday, Wednesday starting at six, is the ribbon cutting, and then Thursday, Friday, Saturday will be big, big days in the mall area, so for those tra- you know, traveling, I'd encourage you to go see it. They, they did the setup in record amount of time from remodeling the store to getting the store set. Uh, the, the employees there were working, um, sixteen to twenty hours a day to get it up and running, and they said they'll be ready, you know, finally ready. It may be somewhat painful tomorrow on the walls, but they'll be ready for grand opening tomorrow at six. So we did get an invite for the Commissioners-
I saw that on the, you know-
For us to be there, so I'd encourage you to be there. It's, uh, kind of the biggest thing in town right now. Um, what else do we got? Bill Hart?
Bill Hart, Trumbull County Maintenance. I reached out to the, um, Health Department as requested. I also talked to Kathy, the, the investigator for the Coroner's Office about, uh, furniture, household furniture left over from when the Health Department moved out. So, yeah, they're excited for this. moved out. So, yeah, they're excited for this. They'll look at the furniture, whatever they leave behind.
The Coroner's Office is leaning towards, they like that building.
Yes, they like that first floor space and they would like to take that first space and move into that.
I think it's worked out because initially the Coroner's Office was thinking about moving to Dr. Ricotti's old office and we would have to purchase that. And we waited and waited for a plan B. And this plan B is pretty feasible and looks like it's gonna suit their needs.
And it doesn't really obstruct anything else, doesn't cause us any additional rent, doesn't cause us anything but the move.
Just some renovations possibly, some tidy ups, new carpet paint.
And we don't have an empty asset, you know? So that, that's another-
We have a second floor that's available still.
Right.
But that's a feature.
But that's okay.
Yeah. Also, um, we have a meeting with the, uh, construction company. That's tomorrow at eleven, so tomorrow, um, we'll, I'm sorry, that's, I think Commissioner Rose, but, have a scheduled meeting Thursday for dawn for the Highland chair. That, so I can give it to our-
Okay. Any other things, I think, uh, yes?
I have a public record to request for, uh, the security camera footage for this room from the meeting of last week. I would like to go ahead and fill that request, uh, with authorization from the Board of Commissioners.
Any, any grounds for the request at all?
None.
Security risk, anything like that, or anything?
No, there, there's, there's no risk from our end. It basically is just video of the meeting last week.
I have no problem with it.
I have no problem.
Okay.
There's something more than the YouTube video, the, they want the security camera.
They want the security camera.
Sure.
I will go ahead and-
Not a problem. One way in. Um.
All right, uh, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer. Uh, Tim asked me here before the meeting about the public hearing that we're gonna have in Vianna about putting it on Zoom. And, uh, I let him know that we normally, we've never done that with a public hearing, but he's saying that-
He-
Is this something we can do?
Yeah. This was something that was brought to my attention that was asked, hey, can we do something with Zoom? We don't have like a mobile unit-
Right.
-to provide Zoom coverage for. Whenever we have meetings such as these, it, we need to take into account what the facility currently has. I don't know what Matthews has there right now. Um-
I, I don't, yeah, it's, when was that school built, Phil? Nineteen seventeen or something?
Uh, fifteen.
Hmm?
Fifteen.
Nineteen fifteen, yeah. And we've had public hearings there before. We, we may be able to get a microphone and a speaker. I think that's about it, so.
I mean, I think the stuff that we do here is, is pretty public and-
Right.
-meetings like that that are open to the public, you know, the public is welcome to be there. And Gary also does allow public comment for a period after the meeting where they can write in. So, um, I mean, I think we're publicly accessible enough for something like that.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that was covered, that, uh, IT wasn't needed.
I, I wouldn't see so.
Okay.
When is that, Gary?
December fourteenth.
We don't have anything tonight, right?
What's that?
We don't have anything tonight, correct?
No.
Oh, I had on my calendar, we had-
Maybe November fourteenth.
Yeah, maybe we put it in the wrong place.
Yeah, I have, uh, Go Bill Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvement meeting tonight.
December fourteenth. Oh, okay.
Gotcha. I'll be early.
Okay.
[laughing]
Um, uh, we also had, last week, we had a gentleman here from, uh, trustee from Braceville. He was also the fire chief, I believe. He, um, when he was here at the meeting, he realized there was ARPA funds the county was dishing out, went back to his other trustees, and they said, hey, we never put in any requests for ARPA. And I know we did reach out to Mecca. We had a program in Braceville, but it was for the, um, the Black History Museum. Um, so he did submit in writing a grant app. I told him he needed to put it on the portal, which is closed. So he needs to get it with, get with Martha. He has it electronically. So I said at the meeting, I would bring up to Martha to ask if, if she can call Mr. Garland back and I can tell him where to do it.
I'm fine with that.
And then put it in the maybe section again with the other ones that came in late.
Sure.
But I, I don't know what the request is, but-
I'll take care of it.
-it did come from Braceville Township Trustees. And we don't wanna overlook anybody-
Sure.
-as we said before.
All right, uh, Commissioners, just so you're aware that they did get four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for a Blue Brick Face Two project for the engineering contract, Braceville Township. So just so you're aware of that.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else before we go to ARPA? I guess just again, I get bringing up every chance I get. It is the most dangerous time you're gonna be driving on the roads. We had a gentleman killed on a motorcycle in Hubbard, I think, last week, hit a deer. We had a big card once on the internet, the car deer accident near Walmart, where the deer ended up in the front seat with the, the lady. So when you're on the roads, dusk and dawn at night, this time of the year, tell your kids-
How'd you get to Walmart?
You know, the deer are running across the roads. They're being chased during mating season and their minds aren't straight. So they're running in areas they normally wouldn't run. And it's absolutely the most dangerous time of the year. Last year, we had more, we had five people at least killed in Trumbull County hit, by hitting deer. This year, we've had a couple, one of them being the motorcyclist that just happened. And you gotta be cautious out there because it's, things could happen in a split second. So when you're in areas, and some of the areas aren't even traditional deer areas, you know, they'll get into the outskirts, the suburbs, and if they're in the wrong place, they're just gonna run, run, run until they get into trouble. So be cautious on the roads.
Seen them on North Rad.
Oh, yeah, me too.
Yeah.
Yeah, they turn up strange places. Um, Martha Yoder, ARPA.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. Um, just, uh, regarding the deer, you know, um, watch, watch out for deer as Midwestern for I love you. [laughing] Also, before I get to the ARPA, I do wanna just, 'cause I won't be here tomorrow, um, I wanna thank the Commissioners for the resolution on, um, Adoption Month and Adoption Day. Um, I am a proud adoptive mom and, um, it was probably one of the best things that ever happened to me. So I just wanted to thank you for that. ARPA update is actually pretty short today. Um, I had reached out to Howland a few weeks ago. They had said they were going to do something. I have not received anything from them. Uh, Attorney Rogers-
Anything from Mecca yet?
No. Yes. It's, it's on the maybe list.
Yeah.
It's been there. Um, uh, Attorney Rogers, um, has had a medical issues, medical issue, but is now back in the office. So hopefully she'll start working through that yes list to get, and the, the, um, priorities that we have for that. Um, I received a request from the Fund for Warren's Future for two million dollars. The requests and documentation have been added to the Commissioners' Drive under pending ARPA requests and have been added to the maybe spreadsheet, which I emailed to all of you. There's no update to the yes or allocated promised spreadsheet.
Okay. Um, also, we do have a Geogus Solid Waste Board of Directors meeting today at two. Uh, I'll be able to attend for, I got a Director's appointment. Tomorrow, you will be there. Hopefully Commissioner Frenchco will be there, so you have a quorum. So if Nikki's listening, please attend that meeting at two. And
you, my notes in my phone real quick. No meeting next week, is that correct? So everybody's aware, no meeting?
No meeting, no, no workshop or meeting next week.
Yes.
Uh, well, um-
The following week, I think you said it was just the meeting on the twenty-ninth.
Correct.
Not, no workshop the following, in two weeks.
Okay.
And the thirtieth is going to be, thirtieth's gonna be at the budget hearing.
Yes.
Oh.
Well, did you wanna have a workshop by yourself next Tuesday, or two Tuesdays from now? Should we go over anything or not? That's up to you.
Oh, let me, let me think about it. If it, if there's a need for it, I will.
Okay.
If not.
I mean, the agenda just might be big. If we skip a week in, the second week, case is questions. Um, then we can all at least listen to it, hear the answers.
Yes. Well, if it's beneficial to everybody, let's do it then. That's fine.
I would say that it would be if you could.
Yeah.
Just 'cause we're gonna miss one. And, um-
Okay. We'll do that.
All right. It, it looks like, uh, we did get the Healthy Aging Grant. And that's something that, that Diane will be following up with. She had to watch a video, take a training on how to spend the money and, um, how we get the payments and stuff. And then we, Commissioners have to figure out where we're gonna allocate it. Um-
A portion of that can be used towards senior transportation, too.
I mean, seven, seven hundred and some thousand dollars, I think. So that's-
Yes.
That's a huge win for us.
All right, uh, Commissioners Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer. Have you gotten emails regarding the training that, uh, we need for that grant that we're trying to get? There's a one I talked to before.
I have not seen it. That's all I've been through here to see if there's any-
Yeah.
I remember you said you were gonna notify them and then have them notify you when they send it out, you know?
Right. And apparently, yeah. Commissioner Frenchco somehow got the certificate. She already got the training done. And, uh, I'm not sure what she received and what email she received in order to do it, but I think that the two of you also got an email.
From which agency?
We just got one just now about cybersecurity training for local government in Ohio.
Okay. Uh, it would be an email from I-Spring, I-S-P-R-I-N-G. They will receive an email from I-Spring with their account information. This was sent to me on October the thirtieth. So an email since October thirtieth from somebody called I-Spring.
I don't see anything either.
How about a guy named Eric Pietras, P-I-E-D-R-A-S?
Regarding the State Red Water Regionalization Project?
That's it.
What date is that tomorrow?
Uh, it's ten twenty-three. Or I'm sorry, eleven, eleven two. I got that.
Yeah. Does it have a link on there for that?
Oh, yeah. Okay. Says here, the I-Spring email should have arise, should have arrived. Please check your junk and spam folders. I'm talking about the I-Spring email. But I can see a couple links here. That email that you received seated on. From here, this guy, Eric, he says two links.
Yeah.
I think he just hit on those for the training.
[laughing]
Okay.
Do you have an extra copy of that sheet?
Yeah, I will make one.
Yeah, this forward copies to both of us.
Yeah, it looks to me like, uh, like you said you were able to pull up. Those, those look like the links for the training.
Yeah.
Let me make a copy of it. Okay.
Do you have them?
Hmm?
You say have them, then?
We have.
Do you have them?
He has, so.
All right. Okay. I'm gonna, I was gonna see if Tim could help them find it.
Okay.
If you have it.
Well, let me, I'll, I'll make a hard copy of this as soon as I walk in.
Okay. All right.
All right. We'll go ahead and do that then. Uh, also, tomorrow, um, Commissioner Cantley said we have, uh, this nine-one-one review board. Uh, Tacey gave me the qualifications. One of them should be a member of the board. There's, uh, the Commissioners that serve as the Chairperson of the Committee. I'd like to volunteer to do that if I could.
Absolutely.
Uh, the Chief Executive Officer, the most populous municipal corporation, that would be the Mayor of Warren. Member of the Board of Township Trustees of the most populous township in the county, as selected by majority vote of the Board of Trustees. So we need to talk to the Trustees Association. That would probably be somebody from Howland.
Send out a, um, sort of an ask from the Township Association, do they want on that?
Right. And then a member of the Board of Township Trustees selected by a majority of boards of Township Trustees in the county pursuant to resolutions they adopt. That could be any trustee that's, um, submitted by the Township Association. And then a member of the Legislative Authority of a municipal corporation in the county, selected by a majority of Legislative Authorities of municipal corporations in the county pursuant to resolutions. Um, that would have to be someone from one of the cities and municipalities. Could be someone from Niles, could be someone from Hubbard, could be, uh, any of the other ones. And then an elected official from within the county, appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. And the natural fit with that would be the sheriff, um, because it's nine-one-one. Um, so I guess what we have to do is reach out to the Townships, get someone from the most populous township, and then another Township trustee to serve on the board. And then a member of a Legislative Authority of a municipal corporation in the county. So Niles has their own nine-one-one. Um, Gerard does their own. So I guess maybe it'd be probably more beneficial for us if we looked towards one of the ones that we service. Um, Newton, Newton Falls doesn't have their own department anymore. So maybe Ben Cowell from Hubbard or, uh-
DeeDee.
The Mayor, DeeDee, the Mayor of Cortland.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially if we're looking to go toward Cortland. She might be a good fit for that. Yes.
I can bring that up as the, um, first name.
Okay, can you handle that? So we need two. We need one from the most populous township and one from any of the townships. So Phil, put you in charge of that and bring, come back next two, or, we won't have next Tuesday, but when you figure out who it's gonna be or whatever, we can present at the next meeting and try to get this board filled because they can't continue on with their feasibility, study and everything else. And it's not until they have this board seated to make some decisions.
Yep.
So let's, um, all right, to reach out to the sheriff on behalf of the Board of Commissioners?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I'll handle that one. Uh, Legislative Authority, reach out to DeeDee Petrowski because I think Ben is already on EMA. And let's see if DeeDee wants to do the, this one.
Especially with the move to Cortland.
Right. And then the Townships, Phil will handle. The Mayor or Warren, I'm sure that Tacey's handling that. And then, uh, I'll do it as a Commissioner.
I think Liberty is the most populous township, not Howland. Is it?
Well, Liberty might be split because they do have Gerard and Liberty, which takes some of their base.
Okay.
So they may have people in the township, but-
Yes.
That's why Gerard leads on the plan of the township.
Okay.
So Phil handled that for us. And then we can get this thing seated. Okay, that's about all we had. I see Diane, you just got here. I'm sorry, but we already went through everything. There's-
I just wanted to update you.
Okay, let's go ahead.
I'm here to update you.
Yes.
Uh, we did get our-
We, we got approach and announcement and all that sort of stuff.
For a bold, really loud-
Yes.
For once. [laughing] Diane Djokovic, Senior Levy Administrator. Um, we did get our Ohio Healthy Aging Grant, seven hundred and eighty thousand approximately. Um, there are requirements, how we have to spend at least half of that. And the rest, we have to come up with our own kind of programming that we want to do. So do you want the Advisory Council Board to come up with recommendations and bring it to you?
How do we have to divvy this out? Like, how do we involve, like, I know Jewish Community Center brought it to us also. Are they involved in that with you? And I know they're expecting or hoping for some of the funds.
Twenty percent has to be spent on housing initiatives. And that could be modifications. Um, we agreed about a month ago about maybe doing temporary wheelchair ramps because we don't have a wheelchair ramp program in this county. And I do get requests for that once in a while. Um, so ten, uh, twenty percent has to be housing initiative, twenty percent has to be, uh, food initiative, and the other ten percent has to be involved with technological type of assistance for seniors. Um, and then the rest of fifty percent, we have to come up with whatever program we want to fund.
With the other fifty percent though, we can use for transportation, correct?
We can use it in any area. Now, my question originally, that I thought would be answered in the Zoom meeting that I listened to yesterday, I thought we had to follow, this came from ARPA, so it has to follow this- I thought we had to follow, this came from ARPA, so it has to follow those guidelines as well. I'm not familiar with the guidelines from the COVID scholars. So is that something that needs to be sent to our experts? At least give us an idea of how this money can be spent.
It wouldn't be ARPA money, we could send it to Bill Danzo because he could actually advise on that, I would think.
Is it knowledgeable as far as the guidelines or how you can spend?
I mean, we retain that attorney for ARPA spending, not for fairly this purpose.
Not necessarily for giving you guidelines as to what you can and can't spend money on?
Well, but I mean, it, it does, but for
Well, we can grant it out to, but once we receive it, I don't know if it's how we spend it or sell it.
I, I would exhaust that option with Bill Danzo first before we get some more billable hours with her.
Several agencies.
She might be able to advise us.
Several agencies have already reached out as far as programs that they thought they would like to have funded. Question to you for moving forward is, if we contract with nonprofit agencies, we don't have to do the bid process. Don't do it that way, then you have to do the formal bid process. We only have, by March thirty-first, we have to have fifty percent of it obligated. By June thirtieth, a hundred percent. By September thirtieth, all spent. So it's very tight, it's gonna be a six-month program basically. So, to move forward. We're going to follow the formal bid process. If we do that, then I need to get on this with putting out an RFP and you know, figure out what programs we want. But if we just reach out to nonprofit agencies with ideas for programming, then you don't
I, I would say we open a window somewhere for them to reach out to us also. That we have these funds available, if you have a program that fits
Some type of program.
what we're looking for. Um, you know, submit a letter or something, so then we're actually reviewing real things and not hypotheticals. And we don't wanna just steer the money to an existing program, just throw it to something we already have. This is a way to kind of open, expand the net maybe. Um, and, and help some people out that traditionally wouldn't have been helped, like if we still had Brandy still here, this would fall in perfect.
Well, I thought of that.
The means they had to the end of the year, but
I thought of that, but Brandy's contract for the food vendor begins March thirty-first, March first. So, to even send them any funding, they're done as of February twenty-eighth
Right.
because of their food vendor.
Right.
But we are going to have people that are trying to move to the other vendors, and those vendors are so it might be a possibility to add that twenty percent of the food initiative to those other vendors so that we can supplement these people that are moving from OEA over to the others. That was my thought on the food side of it.
Because one of them is JJ, or is JCC, right?
We have three vendors actually for, for meal programs. So OEA's uh current consumers can be absorbed by the others if we would provide them additional funding. That was my initial, you know, with the food. I think we have the food and the technological figured out.
What's the tech piece you're thinking?
Well, um, there's an already funded program that they lost, or not lost, uh, the pro, the program funding um is depleted. So in order to continue that program, they could use these funds and it's um setting seniors up individually with the Echo device in their home to give them that piece of technology to allow them to stay connected. That's one of, part of the
Wasn't there something you went to the library or Kent Trumbor something for seniors, technology? You just do something recently?
We've, we've done that through um ARPA money too, as far as uh broadband education, uh digital awareness. We set up programs through the library with
Is that where it was, the library?
Yes, the libraries, the local libraries.
Did?
And they probably had funding from the
We did, we, that was part of our uh ARPA funding, I think we spent a thousand on that for digital, digital literacy for seniors and um load of modern income there.
Who has uh something like that as well?
Uptown Jewish Federation did.
I thought Northside or partners or whatever, they were running it out of West.
Oakwood or Oak uh
Oak.
That's who we partnered with, and they, that's, they, they put the, you're right, Phil, and they, we have that program in the libraries as well.
Can I, can I, just out of curiosity, with the Echo, uh, can they, can they call nine-one-one or reach out for, you know, emergency services through the Echo? Is that, is that a possibility?
I'm not familiar with how those work.
That would be really, like if somebody falls, you know, I, I A lot of people fall at home, they don't have like alert or whatever to be, that would be amazing if thanks to Tech Part, a lot of Echoes or lessers, you can say call nine-one-one and it'll call nine-one-one for you.
Right, that's, yeah, they do.
Do they do that, does an Echo do that? I know lessers does.
I, Alexa, I'm not sure if
I know their watches now would do that.
Yeah.
I mean, they recognize the change and
Yeah, some people actually are buying, they um, the Apple watches for their family members to do that.
Instead of the do not call button, or, or not do not call.
Yeah, like the light alert, yeah, the phone.
Yeah, but it, cause it will sense if somebody falls.
Right.
That would be really So a letter
Sorry, except that that doesn't tell the people they don't have internet connections. So the people in northern counties that don't have any internet connection.
Yeah, that's very true.
I mean, that makes the point that we wouldn't be able to help them as well.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Ten percent, I mean, that's not so very far to look at. You know how many seniors are in there, or elderly population is way more than
A letter out to nonprofit agencies? Or maybe a little paper for interest?
What, what's your, what's the advisory committee recommend?
Well, they haven't met yet since we received the grant notice, but originally, they were under the impression that they would meet at the end of the month to to use the funding. I, I feel reading out with either a news article plus letter to the nonprofit.
Yeah, I think that's probably the best thing to do right now.
Some of the counties are
We, we should make a big splash that we even got the grant with the newspapers to cover that we received the seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
How did we receive?
That's big news as it is.
Thank you, Mauro. That's how we received it, Mauro sent me an email and I'm leaving for vacation. Hey, we have this grant. We got it done, um, some of the community or count, oh, piece of information on this. Eighty-eight counties in the state of Ohio, eighty-six of eighty-eight apply. And um, some of the counties are letting area agency on aging for the contract, and that the area agency on aging would take ten percent.
Hey, can you talk to her about that, about the grant a little bit, maybe put in there that grant's available and here's how they can apply? Well, we'll make sure Raymond gets, yeah, fast on the Ray, the importance of it, that's, that's the big topic today's meeting is we have this grant money, we're looking for ways to spend it.
Looking for ways to help seniors.
Yes.
Any other questions? I'm here today with this line because we met with uh the um gentleman that's in charge of what they call the TAR
TAR.
Technical Assistance Review from ODOT, so Mike can update you with that. Bring you under the bus.
Approach. All right.
I've got two things. Mike Salma, Trumbone County Transit. Uh, as Diane said, we just met with a staff member from ODOT. We will be having something called a TAR review. It'll be sometime between July of next year and November. We don't have a date yet, we won't know until July. Um, and he went over everything, he goes, you guys are in great shape. Couple of things we gotta do on our website, and I'll work with Lisa on that. But we're in really good shape with ODOT for our review that we should have prior.
And just on another note, have we reached out to Warren yet?
That was my next note.
Okay.
So, yeah. Uh, I've reached out to Warren multiple times, the day I left, the day I left here. I called first thing in the morning, the next day, I've reached out to him at least four times, five times, and not gotten back from him.
Who, who have you asked to speak to?
Right.
How, how about Eddie Colbert, the safety service director? Try that.
I can try that also, that's fine. I've been trying, I've been calling at eight o'clock in the morning, cause that's a good time to get but I can try, so I didn't know if you wanted me to continue working, or if one of you, one of the two of you wanted to try reaching out. Part I didn't know. And I'll continue working with it, the question
Try, try reaching out to Eddie Colbert, cause he's obviously day-to-day operations there as safety service director, so we can even get a meeting with him that might be benefit.
I'll do that, and then if we don't, we're gonna have to make a decision just to move forward with this. Cause we have till December thirtieth, basically. Something over to WRT and MOU, and I've got a meeting on Thursday uh that Dean and I are both going to. So I've already talked to him about the MOUs, I think he's gonna work on putting an MOU together. And in regards to the business, whatever you wanna call it, business advisory committee at this point, we'll meet for the first time um for today.
Very good.
I've got about four members.
Good.
I understand I have to do a public release, so I'll be doing that.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Martha?
For that to remind you, and I think Tim forgot as well, um, Martha, you're a Trumbone County auditor. Your website is live. New one.
Well, very nice, thanks.
It's of yesterday.
We missed you with our transit page, but you've got to give them more information.
Okay.
But we noticed it looked different.
Yeah.
I went, where's the old page?
Um, with regard to what you were talking about as far as trying to um ask for ideas or people to you could um talk to someone about adding that as well, to the, to your webpage. So that, you know, who are you dealing with, Lisa? Yeah, talk to Lisa.
I can, can you still access the meetings? I had a hard time finding where the access meetings, but you know how you were able to hit on the meetings?
You actually can join the meeting in progress, right?
I mean, to watch the AS.
AS ones are all on YouTube. You go to YouTube and go under Trumbone, and I'll make sure that there's a link there, I'll, I'll ask about that. But if you actually go, cause that's how I do it.
Right.
You just go straight to YouTube
Yeah.
and we have, you can subscribe to Trumbone County, and they're all there.
I just think there's probably a lot of people that were used to going to the
Sure, I
website and then hitting on those meeting dates.
I'll, I'll look at it, I haven't looked at it in depth, but I'll, I will or have um Chris Lynn or somebody
Okay. Question for you, Ann Alex. Um, I, I looked this up this weekend, and it's still wrong, I, I went to Trumbone County Human Resources. I looked at job opportunities, cause someone had asked me about a nine-one-one job. And then I hit the nine-one-one one, and it says on here still, for more information, contact Patty Goldner, interim director, or Roger Laird, operations manager. He's been gone for
Yeah, we'll get
three, four months. And it says for the um job application, I emailed uh Patty Goldner, which may be correct, but we gotta get the, get the Patty Goldner interim director and Roger Laird, we gotta get off there with his.
We're redoing our whole website, just so you know, we're in the process of that, but yeah, we will update that. And the nine-one-one job application is on there. But yeah, it is, I emailed D.R. Goldner.
And it's just on there just for nine-one-one dispatcher, not for the supervisors yet?
The supervisor is on there under general county positions, I'm looking at it right now.
Okay.
But that position did come down. So
What's that?
That position did come down.
Okay.
But it's still there. So you have to go under general, or we're working the whole, this website, I, I apologize again.
Like where you, where it says nine-one-one, you click on it, and that's the thing, even the application that's on here says up top, you know, Patty Goldner, interim director, you know, that's gotta all be changed on there.
Well, yes, but we're redoing the whole thing period, so there will be notes, so just so everybody's clear outside of JFS, cause I, I try not to interject in their processes, everything's going through county HR period, Danny, so, or commissioner. So, we're reworking to where there's too much of applications going a million different places, and then they're coming to me, and I'm not the one who's responsible for, did we get everybody?
Right.
Did we make sure everybody was screened? So that's what I'm trying to tell you, is right now we're completely revamping everything and it's
So should we take this down in the interim, or leave it up long?
No, we have to leave something up, yeah. So, um, what I'm doing is when I post jobs, if you look at the nine-one-one supervisor, you can see that it says the application comes to me specifically. Um, well, county HR, under general, and you go to nine-one-one supervisor, and it's very explicit, be right there. Attend, send all applicants or to send their resumes directly to county human resources. So it's very, if they just click the link, they'll, they'll figure out what to do. Um, but unfortunately, I have found with, and it's nobody's fault, but with many departments, when applications are going half through Indeed, half to their human resources, half to our human resources, we get three hundred applicants for job postings, I can't be sure, when the board asked me, did we do our due diligence in screening everybody? I can't be sure if I didn't get all the applications myself.
Gotcha.
So unfortunately, I've had to rethink how we do all this, which means HR taking on more of the responsibility, which means everything comes through HR. Instead of having this haphazard, some goes here, some goes there, some goes there.
In the interim, could we, since we have nine-one-one up there, could we add nine-one-one supervisor as a hyperlink under the nine-one-one thing too, so
The job came down already, it's done.
Okay.
It's been done, I got multiple applications, they were all sent off yesterday to nine-one-one. So Lisa Hobens, I need to tell her to go in and remove that, you have to understand it's a manual process. I don't have access to the website, auditor's office does. I have to go in every time a job posts or comes down and tell them, please post it, please take this off. It, it's a very manual process, and it's not working the best, to be quite honest with you. Um, but I don't have control over my own website, I, I have to communicate every single time I post a job, which is a lot. So I would love to have control over my own website, but I'm not gonna try to take away that from the auditor, so
We can, we can talk about how you could have a little more.
That would probably be helpful, well, thank you.
Uh, we'll talk.
Yeah.
Tim and you would be able to talk.
I mean, at the rate that we're posting jobs, I, I mean, I'm posting two, three jobs a week. And you have to understand, everyone is tied to different contracts, some post seven days, some post ten days, some post fifteen days, some post thirty days. I, I have nineteen different divisions, departments, offices, that I have to, a lot of work. A lot of work. You're welcome. So that's why we're revamping the whole website. But the nine-one-one was specifically posted, Danny, it was sent to me, they did it all right, it's on there. It needs to come down though, came down yesterday. So right now we have the groundkeeper that we just did last week, that's on there, the sewer, yours is on there every other day. Yeah, theirs is there every single week. Um, and then JFS has their own
Oh, needs to come down too?
Yep. So I have to literally email every time I need something to come down.
Okay.
It's yeah. A lot of companies have, you know, HRIS systems, a lot of systems that do these things for them, we don't have that, so it's a manual process.
Well, let's see what we can do to make it easier. Um, I meet with Tim today for a regular meeting.
It seems as well you can set it to automatically come down, I know, like
Well, on Indeed, so, and Indeed I have all those, I own that account, right? So I can do all that on Indeed. But I'm talking, I get four hundred applicants on Indeed, I mean, for, I can't even tell you, I mean
Yeah, we
it's insane. So, that's what I'm saying, like there's a lot, I don't mean to like, you know, say that, there's a lot more that goes into this process than what I think people realize. Um, but we post jobs multiple places, right? So I'm not just posting here on the county website, it's also going to Indeed, it's going to NWDTP, it's going to churches. I mean, I have stuff coming in from out the wazoo. I have people dropping in and filling out applications. Um, it's, it's, it's a full-time job. So Indeed, I have settings in there where I can go in and say it's posted from this day to this day. Our county website, like I said, I don't have that um luxury.
I think we can try to, we'll, we'll, we'll work it out, make it better.
New applications, this is Diane Djokovic. There's four renewing council member positions. One is not going to renew because she's already got a full-time job and just got more duty. So I will pass four, and I have one member who's not renewing, but he's been ill.
When is the application period for that?
Uh, I don't know what the county office does to advertise for that. I have it sent in my, even to let you know those positions that are available. Um, but it's due uh, December thirtieth.
Can you look into that, of, of posting those?
Okay.
Posted, we have four, four that are up.
But two are interested in returning?
Uh, it's, it's, the last meeting, three are thinking about it still. I know one is not, so the other three haven't given me confirmation, yes or no.
And one of those three is fixed?
Actually, one did, one already sent in her paperwork, me, I don't know if she sent it. And there's an outside list that I know applies as well. Without Without being advertised yet. Must be on the board.
Can you forward all that information to Lisa and the commissioners?
Work on grading it so that I have everything done at once, but I can send you preliminary beginning of that.
Just something that we can get out there, 'cause I, I better go, will be asked already too.
Commissioner Alexandria D. Johnson, before you're asking about nine-one-one supervisors. I screened them all yesterday. We did not get one internal applicant, and I want you to know that. Not one.
Nobody internally did?
From which?
Nine-one-one supervisors. We purposely built that program. Um, and I say we, and I, I mean that. I mean, we, we invested a lot of time in restructuring so that way we could offer a get-to-next for somebody within that department. So, that is very disappointing. Uh, two supervisor positions were posted. It would have been a great, um, morale boost for that department. Uh, they're at a pay range eight right now, they would have went from.
I think they're, they're all afraid of losing union protection because of the uncertainty of the way the department's been.
You gotta trust a little bit.
That was unfortunate, right?
At some point, you gotta learn to trust. So, yeah, they're all.
Surprising.
Yep. And that job was posted for fifteen days and it was advertised everywhere, so. Make sure you are aware of that.
So, we're gonna have to bring in a supervisor potentially that doesn't even know the CAD. Two of them that probably are, are gonna be unfamiliar with the system.
Well, they're gonna be unfamiliar with our potential CAD. There's not that many CADs out there, as we've learned. Um, there's only so many options. It's kind of a monopoly when it comes to this sort of system. Um, but I did screen all of them personally yesterday. Um, and actually, there are some very, uh, very good applicants in there. So, some that have been, uh, Youngstown dispatching, we have supervisors in the mix already. Uh, there's about five that I'm gonna recommend, should definitely be interviewed.